The the Com Plan, I strongly support the Com Plan. Don't think it's that obsolete. It is the only document that had citizen participation. And with Banderas, I think it's time to get Banderas complete. Every week you're telling me how you're going to do it cheaper. Make Banderas the most important thing. And I'm totally opposed to this water tower and the aquifer.
Ms. Dunn, you come, sir. Rachel Rayfield.
That's the other problem. We only got three minutes.
Ms. Dunn.
You're going to have a luncheon. What we really would like is the extra two minutes.
Ms. Dunn.
Rachel Rayfield, 7514 Woodford Drive, Somerville. As a taxpayer and resident of Somerville, I have some questions that I'd like answered regarding the January fourteenth Town Council meeting.
Ma'am, would you hold up one second?
Sure.
I am so sorry.
That was the fastest three minutes I ever saw.
I mean, I'm kind of fast.
Thank you.
It's just.
I got it. I'm good. Turn Ms. Rachel over again, again.
Why do you see my name addressing?
We got that.
Okay, good. Okay. Regarding the January fourteenth Town Meeting, who gave the manager authorization to investigate the issue with the former staff? Why was the former staff never contacted regarding any of these allegations? Out of all of the possible contacts in the state, why was disgraced former State Auditor Beth Wood chosen to do the investigation? How much did our town and our tax dollars go towards paying for this? Who contacted the media outlets prior to the January fourteenth meeting? Why were Mayor and Councilman Doggett not told of Ms. Wood or her report before the meeting? Why was Beth Wood allowed to make her presentation during a public meeting and not in a closed session? Regarding the February fourth special call meeting, is this investigation that was authorized then complete? When will us as the town hear of its findings? Our money paid for it, so we should know what the results are. And how much did all of this cost us? This money being spent is not the town council's money, it belongs to the citizens. Personally, I would like to stop spending money on attorney fees and frivolous investigations, but on items that would benefit our entire community. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Merritt, I got it now. Okay. Beth Kaplan.
Beth Kaplan, seventy-nine seventy-nine High School Road. I was told on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, that our former town manager's contract was unfair to the citizens of Somerville. And then I was told, don't worry, we won't miss a beat. We are missing many beats. Since the time our whole staff, since that time, our whole staff has resigned, our attorney resigned, our lobbyist resigned, our auditor resigned, and many of our volunteers have resigned. We are taking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from our fund balance to cover admin salaries for the rest of the year. That's over what we already budgeted. We have a witch hunt orchestrated against our former town manager and finance officer that appears to be headed up by our interim town manager, finance officer. We're going to have a finding on our audit because the same interim town manager, finance officer, seemed incapable of picking up the phone to discuss vague reconciliations with our former finance officer. The town has missed many beats with the annexation of almost a thousand acres. The town will now stand by and watch the development being built with no control by the taxpayers of Somerville. The town is missing beats with its inability to finish or even start any of its capital projects. And we think we'll be a good bet for future grants? All I see are tax dollars that we are spending with nothing to show. With proper leadership and vision, we could have been a success story on how our town moves on after facing tragedy. But that isn't happening. Instead, people respond to me about how sorry they are that I live in Somerville. With proper leadership and vision, we could be moving forward in a positive and exciting way. But instead, the Council for is throwing Somerville. Thank you.
Leon Stokes.
Leon Stokes, sixty-nine eleven Maynard Road. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Somerville with forty-two years in IT and software development. I'm here to address concerns about the recent preliminary audit of the town of Somerville. According to firms like Robert Path, Indeed, and others, financial auditors require integrity, professionalism, attention to detail, and strong IT and math skills. During the council meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Beth Wood of GWI Tax and Accounting presented a preliminary report orally, followed by a written report on January fifteenth. In part of that oral presentation and in the written report, she claimed a June tenth, twenty twenty-four backup had one hundred nineteen thousand gigabytes less data than one from January first, twenty twenty-four, calling file deletion the biggest issue. Anyone with basic IT knowledge would say one hundred nineteen terabytes, not one hundred nineteen thousand gigabytes. akin to saying an eighty-five thousand dollar truck costs eight million five hundred thousand cents. This suggests ignorance or an intent to exaggerate. The reports, details, what kind of backups were made, stores' locations, custody details beyond, all of these are details beyond one day's audit scope. Yet it was made public without interviewing implicated employees or contacting the former IT contractor. Despite Wood admitting more investigation is needed, so why not wait for a full inquiry? If auditors need integrity, attention to detail, and IT skills, this report falls short. I ask, why publicize a sloppy, detailed, preliminary report? Why imply wrongdoing without proof or interviews? Why not consult the IT contractor about alleged deletions? Making this public was at best reckless and unprofessional or worse than a vendetta to smear former employees. It is incomprehensible that the town's attorney at the time would approve making this report public, thus making defamation lawsuits possible. A competent approach would have been to privately assess the report and if warranted, commission a thorough, independent investigation and publicize only proven wrongdoing. Since this did not happen, I urge this council to commission an independent investigation based on its findings, either publicize proof of wrongdoing or exonerate and apologize for those implicated.
Judy Bastian.
Good evening. I'm Judy Bastian, six-one-zero-one for Oaks Court. I've lived there since two thousand nine. I'm here because I care about Somerville, and I was called to hear the specious allegations and behavior by certain members of the Town Council at the January Town Meeting. In the past, Somerville has always been supported by its residents, staff, volunteers, and elected officials. I am here to acknowledge our friends and neighbors, the former staff, volunteers, and contractors who have worked so hard for Somerville. What has happened? Since May two thousand twenty-four, there have been twenty-four departures. Volunteers. Clark Doggett, planning board member. Jane Doggett. Trails and Open Space members. Vicky Bridges, Finance Committee Chair. Alan Abrams, Finance Committee Chair. Bruce Peterson, History Committee Chair. Jim Buttonow, History Committee Member. Gary Brown, History Committee Member. The late Trudy Whiteacre, Planning Board Member. She was not reappointed with no reason given. Kathy Rooney, Planning Board Member. Mark Brown, History Committee, Founder's Day, Town ABC liaison. Staff. Scott Whitaker, Town Manager. Jeff Goer, P and R Director. Brad Wrenz, Planning Director. Dee Hall, Finance Officer. Cheryl Gore, Events Coordinator Assistant to the Town Manager. Sarah Tibbetts, Town Clerk. Daniel Baer, Enforcement Officer. Rick Biggs, Part-Time P and R. Jager Nance, Part-Time Seasonal Park Employee. Tanner Nance, Part-Time Seasonal Park Employee. Mason Winfrey, Deputy Town Clerk. He worked one month before leaving February. Independent contractors. Bob Hornick, Town Attorney. Cynthia Randolph, CPA, the Auditor. And James Hoffman, Town Attorney. Twenty-four people who worked so hard for this town. And it's got to change. It's gone on too long. And the late Will Huber Drums from Somerville, they had that logo so solid. And I don't like it. And you are stewards of this town. And I look forward to more transparency, more public comments, listening to the citizens who have important historical information and can help you be good stewards. So thank you for being elected official, and I look forward to progress. Thank you.
Take your time. Church Brown.
Church Brown, six-two oh four Morse Creek Drive. Somerville Town Council's Majority Four, Jonathan Hamilton, Linda Vane, Janelle Robinson, and Dee Clay are an embarrassment as they have prioritized personal vendetta over the town's well-being. Instead of governing responsibly, they have engaged in relentless character attacks on former Town Manager Scott Whitaker and Finance Officer Dee Hall. In February twenty-fourth, the Majority Four decided not to renew Scott Whitaker's contract despite Scott's twelve years of dedicated service to the town. Claiming they found a loophole in his contract, the Majority Four forced Whitaker to take legal action to negotiate the severance agreement. Only after months of wrangling and spending thousands of taxpayer dollars on attorneys was an agreement negotiated. The mistreatment of Whitaker triggered the resignation of all town staff. Rather than acknowledging the crisis and proving himself as a leader, Jonathan Hamilton issued a press release in which he arrogantly stated, and I quote, "I'm certain we won't skip a beat," end quote. During an August twenty-third Town Council meeting, Hamilton also said, and I quote, "With the de-annexation, I feel as though that's more of a threat to be used as a bargaining tool. I don't know exactly how much fight he actually has. I am against David Couch," end quote. Thanks to the Majority Four's underestimation of Couch, our town lost a thousand acres, lost control over how these acres will be developed, and will forfeit an estimated five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual revenue when the villages of Somerville Farms is fully built out. In January, the council paid Dana Luther a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour and disgraced State Auditor Beth Wood an undisclosed sum to conduct a baseless investigation into Whitaker and Hall. This has set the stage for counter lawsuits certain to cost Somerville taxpayers more money. Let me offer a few examples of character defamation of Scott Whitaker and Dee Hall by the Majority Council of Four, Twig Rollins and Dana Luther. One. Twig Rollins has claimed that Dee Hall failed to create that contract. His direct quote is, and I quote, "I haven't found a pre-olite stamp on any contract that I've come across yet from the old administration," end of quote. This is a criminal allegation and unbelievably hauls public records requests for copies of any contract she had not pre-implicated remains unfulfilled by the town. Two. During Beth Wood's January presentation, Linda Vane asked, and I quote, "How do we get our money back?" end of quote. This, of course, assumes guilt without any proof. Three. Janelle Robinson and Dana Luther have accused Whitaker and Hall of withholding passwords when they left. This is incorrect as the town's IT company confirmed Whitaker and Hall appropriately turned over all passwords and Apple IDs. There are many more examples I could reference, but I only give three minutes. In summary, this council driven by revenge is recklessly wasting taxpayer money, smearing dedicated public servants at the likely cost of counter lawsuits against the town, and ultimately endangering Somerville's charter. Our town deserves better.
Hi, sis.
My name is Patty Stokes, and I live at sixty-nine eleven Maynard Road here in Somerville. The agenda for a special call meeting on February fourth included item three A, reviewing investigative auditing proposals from GWI Accounting, where Beth Wood, former State Auditor and friend of Town Manager Twig Rollins, is a partner. However, Mr. Hamilton immediately proposed a meeting, stating, "I don't see any reason to go there yet until we have complete and accurate data." When pressed, he reiterated the need for a full picture before moving forward. Well, shouldn't there have been a full picture of complete and accurate data before Beth Wood presented findings from then interim Town Manager, Finance Officer, and disgruntled former employee Dana Luther at the January fourteenth council meeting? Using inflammatory and legally risky terms like sabotage and data deletion. Meanwhile, one of you contacted the media in advance to make sure they were here to cover the spectacle and broadcast the accusations against former Town Manager Scott Whitaker and Finance Officer Dee Hall. What's especially ironic to me is that Beth Wood and Twig Rollins have some pretty dark shadows in their own closets. In two thousand twenty-three, Beth Wood resigned as State Auditor after being convicted of using a state-issue vehicle for personal abuse, including multiple trips to spy shopping centers and salons. A year earlier, she ran not into but over a parked vehicle after attending a holiday party. And then she left the scene. She was convicted of hit-and-run, leaving the scene promptly to amputate and infraction for unsafe movement. Rollins' professional background is riddled with red flags. Five jobs in the last five years and at least a dozen in the last twenty, ranging from mattress salesman, insurance salesman, deputy sheriff, emergency services worker, and most recently, co-enforcement officer for about one and a half years, county planner for nine months, and finally, manager of a tiny town of Magnolia, population nine hundred and fifty, for just under one hundred and a half years. Notably, he did secure a thirty percent raise there within a year and soon afterwards began hunting for a new job. He just doesn't stay long. His financial history is equally concerning with a string of judgments and liens for unpaid taxes, bad checks, debts to individuals, businesses, and the NC Department of Revenue, tax claims that were suddenly paid just days after he started working for the town of Somerville. Despite this, Rollins' troubling professional financial records were apparently deemed by some council members to be acceptable, while efforts to publicly tarnish Whitaker and Hall's reputations ramped up. So what's the deal? The only conclusion I can draw is that pride, arrogance, and anger have blinded you. The entire town staff and their Whitakers so strongly believe that he was unjustly fired and furthermore, that it was egregiously wrong for the majority of you to try to remake on the severance package he was entitled to per his employment contract, that every single one of them resigned last night. You didn't see it coming, and you've been on a witch hunt ever since. You also left the doors wide open for a defamation lawsuit.
Pam Chorkunoff.
Pam Chorkunoff, sixty-eight hundred.
Pam, I'm sorry. Could you pull that mine down? I'm having a little trouble hearing. Thank you.
How's that?
That's better.
Pam Chorkunoff, sixty-eight hundred, Brook Van Groen, Somerville. I would just flabbergasted with just hearing what Patty said. When I learned what was paid to our Pam attorney for just two months, I was really curious about what the rest of the legal fees looked like. From April through June of two thousand twenty-four, just three months, the town wrote checks to Lloyd as totaling one hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. A hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred dollars of that was paid to our now-departed Attorney, Town Attorney Jim Hoffman. He charged the town three seventy-five an hour with no limit. Talk about a contract not being favorable to the town. I wonder who negotiated that contract? From PRR, I gathered the following information regarding the town's legal costs. These are not annual costs, but the town paid these amounts from April through June of two thousand twenty-four to eight law firms. There's a ninth law firm, but I'll talk to that, address the cost of that later. The town of Somerville paid one hundred and ninety-five thousand, three ninety-one fifty, as I've said. A hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred to Jim Hoffman, Town Attorney. Ramsdale Maltzby, twenty-one thousand, nine seventy-five. Maynard Nixon, nineteen thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Nelson, Mullins, Riley, and Scarborough, six thousand, five twenty-five. Elliot Morgan, Parsons, five thousand dollars. Franz Vangy, I believe is his name. Brooke Smith and Prophet, four thousand, five twenty. And Juan Buon and Dixon, seven hundred and fifty dollars for land planning related to the de-annexation. And finally, six thousand, five eighty-four was paid to Bob Hornick, our Town Attorney, until April. And number nine, Robinson, Redshaw, and Hanson. They were hired for evaluation of the legal rights in acquiring a thousand acres that we lost during the annexation. The date council has neither disclosed their cost at the time they were hired nor have they reported from the cost to date. Is this inquiry ongoing? Have they finished? If so, what was the cause? Or how much longer is it going to go on? How much more is it going to cost the town? It should be noted that Councilman John Doggett did vote against hiring this law firm. Why should anyone have to submit a PRR to find out how our money's being spent and for what? For fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through twenty-three, the proposed budget for contracted legal fees was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's all.
Chad Rider. Hi, my name is Chad Rider, fifty-four oh three Centerfield Road, Somerville. I came to the last Town Council meeting a couple of months ago with a couple purposes. One was to chair by appreciation of some of the progress that had been made at that time, before we had a maintenance committee, on the park specifically, it was about the Somerville Community Park behind us. And then also, of course, I was there wanting to get citizen involvement and with, whether it's the Open Trail or Open Spaces and Trails Committee was the request or some other way, especially considering the amount of the deforestation that happened across the street. And seeing all of that going on, wanted to intervene. I will say, I'm very pleased that we haven't cut down a bunch more of the park since the last time we were here. But, you know, obviously, there's no action yet on getting citizen involvement. And I was told that our Town Manager did not want citizen involvement for that because it would get in the way of work. I asked for base, anything beyond base condition, which means major changes like cutting down significant portions, not just doing things like repainting or, you know, something that needed maintenance. So my request, back again, is please, it seemed to have a positive response last time, but again, no action. So I'd like to ask for that. Now, I would be remiss, having witnessed what I saw last Town Council. I was shocked as a citizen coming in. It was, I mean, it was incensing to see everything that happened. So whether it was ramrodging through, bigger government, commitment to taxes, Town Council members didn't know about all the maintenance department that was going to be brought in. Felt like it was just bully proof. Request to have more time, but no, we've got to do it now. We've already got people lined up to get hired. We've got to go, we've got to go. We've got to get a bigger, bring in everybody to create a more urban environment so we can have big giant baseball tournaments here and more traffic and more people and spend more money. And that was disappointing. That was very disappointing to see the Town Council not take a step back and keep things. I thought I elected some of you for keeping things world, and here we are. Go, go, go. If it's about bigger government and more commitment to need to spend more tax money, why don't we do something like, just be transparent and let us know? Now, the other part I was flabberg, and let us know that this is about not being a paper town. It's about making us look better. I'm running out of time, but I was flabbergasted. You've heard all the part around, we got a convicted criminal coming and doing an audit of our town who's violated our ethics. And I mean, I remember all that on the national and state news, and that's embarrassing. And then, in summary, I mean, basically, I mean, you got, the thousand acres is gone. So why don't we focus forward instead of backwards? Why are we going after blame? Why are we trying to blame you? It's gone. Let's move forward. Let's look to the future. I need you guys. You're here to lead us. You're here to take us to saving our town, okay? We've got the rest of the town to save, and the vultures are circling. They want an annex, they want to take it. So please, do what you were elected to do and lead us forward, not backwards. Thanks.
Ready. Emily Ray.
I'm Y'all, my hand, Emily Ray, and I live at fifty-four oh three Centerfield Road. I've been there since two thousand nine four. On January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at the Town Meeting, Beth Wood advised the council, "Put your policy and procedures in place to protect the town against the kinds of things I'm reporting to you here tonight." Afterwards, in the same meeting, Mr. Rollins and Mr. Coon stood before you and sold you a new in-house maintenance department. The council adopted it on the spot without giving citizens a voice in the matter. What's more is the Town Manager and council ignored Beth Wood's advice about creating and implementing sound policies and procedures. There was no discussion of maintenance, policy, and procedure that night. During citizen comments on one fourteen twenty-five, my husband requested the community park be returned to citizen oversight. A few days after the meeting, Mr. Doggett was respectful enough to inform us that Mr. Rollins resisted returning the park to citizen oversight because Mr. Rollins didn't want to get permission from citizens every time he wanted to paint a wall. I assert, there is a difference between maintenance and projects. Any facilities manager will assert the same. Going beyond base condition maintenance should rightly involve citizen input. Without accountability and proper policy outline, our maintenance department is ripe for mismanagement, financial corruption, and ethics violations. Back in December, Mr. Rollins and Mr. Coon failed to consult with citizens, committees, knowledgeable professionals, and environmental agencies before clearing the park of native plant species and wildlife habitat. It was mismanagement. But the council majority chose to protect the new Town Manager from scrutiny instead of heeding the voices of the citizens they were elected to represent. An experienced Town Manager would know not to conduct projects in this manner. In February two thousand twenty-four, when the council majority ended our town's contract with Scott Whitaker, Mr. Clay said he felt that Whitaker's contract was unfair to the town. We were not given specific reasons why it was considered unfair. Considering Mr. Rollins' failure to follow Beth Wood's advice on the importance of policy implementation, his resistance to citizen engagement, and his mismanagement of the natural passive park, citizens deserve to review Mr. Rollins's resume to determine if his contract is fair to us. On behalf of the citizens of Somerville, I request Mr. Rollins and the council share his resume with citizens so that all questions about his competency, experience, and education can be answered and dispelled. We deserve transparency. Thank you.
Lexi Klein.
Lexi Klein, seventy-nine sixty-six High School Road. I'm sure most of the people in here know that I'm John Doggett's daughter, but I'm just going to clarify that because Jonathan Hamilton wants to bring it up every time he addresses me after my public comments. So I thought I would get that out of the way so he could actually address the things that I'm saying. I do just want to also add that constantly harping upon my relationship to Councilman Doggett is a poor and obvious way to sidestep the issues that I continue to bring to the attention of the council. But I'm going to get to the real reason I'm standing up and speaking out today. It may come as a surprise It may come as a surprise to many of you, but government cannot function when transparency is treated as optional. It's not a privilege for a select few. It's a fundamental requirement for every elected official sitting in the room. Yet, time and time again, we see situations where some members of this council are left out of discussions, denied critical context, and expected to vote on issues without full access to the information that they need. That is not governance, that is manipulation, and that is completely unacceptable. Every single council member here was elected by the people of Somerville. And when you deliberately sideline one of your colleagues, you're not just dismissing them, you're silencing the voices of the residents who put them in this seat. That is a direct insult to the democratic process and to the people you plan to serve. You don't have to like every council member sitting here. In fact, I know that many of you don't always get along, and that's fine. You don't have to agree with them, but you do have a duty and obligation to respect the fact that they too were chosen by the voters. And by extension, their voices deserve to be heard, their perspectives deserve to be considered, and their access to critical information must be equal to everyone else's. Governing behind closed doors, withholding information, or making decisions in silos does nothing but breed distrust and dysfunction. And let's be clear, a fractured council does not just hurt the officials, it hurts the people of this town. If decisions are being made with only partial input, then those decisions do not reflect the will of the people. They reflect the will of a few. That is not democracy, that is not transparency, and that is not acceptable. Some might argue that not every discussion needs to involve every council member, that sometimes certain issues require a limited scope of involvement. But here's the problem, when those limitations become habitual, when the same voices are consistently excluded, it stops being about efficiency and starts being about control. And that is not how representative governments should function. The residents of Somerville deserve a council that works for them, not one that plays political games or picks and chooses who gets to be informed. The people are watching, and they expect better.
Teresa Perriman.
Hi, Teresa Perriman, seven four zero one Greenwall Drive. I was up here also in January, and I would have requested that y'all investigate to what happened to my fifteen hundred dollars on that fee schedule. And I just wanted to update y'all on what I've heard because I think my statement was is, please don't tell me we'll look into it. I wanted to update y'all and let y'all know what I've heard since then. I think y'all get the point now. I really would like to know what happened to my fifteen hundred dollars. I still want my fee schedule earned, and I would like it to be done soon. And the second thing was the fifteen hundred dollars and the, and watch real. Again, again, if it's going to be eminent domain in two thousand and thirteen, when it first come to cancel, they said, we will start this if it doesn't take eminent domain. I hope y'all still will consider that and it be no eminent domain on this trail. I don't think that's going to be, I think you won't end up having to do eminent domain. So I hope y'all don't and just go on with the next project. Thank you.
This concludes everyone I have signed up for public comments. Seth Lake. I wasn't going to speak, but I've been inspired.
Yeah, a couple of slides.
Danny Nelson.
Hi, my name is Danny Nelson, twenty-five hundred Plaza Ridge Road. I wasn't expecting not a good bunch of people. But we got a group of people here that knows me, knows of me, and people make comments. Danny, what are you going to do next for the town of Somerville? Now they're on a different side. Everything's been against the other left staff. I knew the staff, I worked with the staff. I was here before the staff, the old staff come. As soon as it left, I jumped in. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got evidence in my phone, and I'm going to withhold it until you get this so-called threat of a lawsuit coming. Because I got evidence that shows, y'all don't know what you're talking about. What a great staff we had. I jumped in, Ms. Stokes. You thanked me many times for what I've done. The Baptist Memorial, the town hall, no end to it. And then you get up here, talk about how great it was. I went down there, I seen the results. My tax dollars and all these people thought about had been paying for a bunch of people and previous staff that I personally witnessed when I jumped in as a volunteer to see what a sorry job they was doing with my tax dollars. And our town manager should have been overseeing all that. He didn't. The parks record, he should have been making his guys get up and pick up these parks and do all this other stuff. And like I say, I'm not going to reveal the evidence because you threaten a lawsuit, but I'll certainly produce it when the time comes. It was left in a mess, and I have heard, quote, Ms. Dee Hall, "It's in perfect condition. You should have walked to the park after they left." They've been sitting on their behinds over there somewhere, taking my tax dollars, having ice breaks, and collecting a regular salary. So evidently, you don't know about it. Laugh at me all you want to, I may get booed out here, but I've been seeing it, I've lived it. You wouldn't want to live in your house on your property from what I seen and what I experienced and what I dealt with when the previous town staff left here. And I'm going to tell you, I seen it, I've got it, I know it. So brag all you want to, we did start over, and y'all don't like it. All you want to do is just praise the people that didn't do the job. I lived it, I seen it, I'm going to stand by it, and I'll keep it. And when the time comes, I'll show it. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Mike Crawford.
Duane Crawford, eleven oh six M C Highway one fifty U S. I want to respond to a bunch of things, but they've done too many things, they did too many things to stop you. So I'll start this way, just because they say it doesn't make it true. And just because they say it doesn't mean they told you the whole thing. One thing I'll touch on, I'll touch on just a couple of things. We talked about the manager not getting his severance. Well, per the contract, if it was in there, hundred percent agree. But didn't that contract expire? When a contract expires, is it still enforceable? No. So was he due severance? Per contract, he was dead, so no, he wasn't due. Been a lot of talk about passes, we'll talk about Speedway in particular. You see me get up here, and I'm sorry for the people that had to wait. I didn't, I don't like making people wait because of that rezoning thing, it didn't happen today. But I'm stickler for the rules that have to apply, even if you don't like me, even if I don't like you, the rules need to be applied equally, and they need to be applied as written. Go back to your October two thousand and ten rezoning, the commercial rezoning for the David Couch property. I challenge anybody to go back and find where that rezoning cited the recently adopted comprehensive plan. It did not. It did not. Mr. Whitaker knew that. He tried to amend it at the following meeting, after the rezoning was complete. After that was done, he went back and asked our council to adopt the statement, the sentence, that's illegal, he can't do that. Scott Whitaker's not every thing, some of these people might get out of it. He, there's a lot more to that Scott Whitaker than you're being told here. I'm going to stop right there and finish with this. I wouldn't say this earlier, it's a little too late now, but I think you should have probably pushed that rezoning tonight back to the planning board, which our town planner said was an option for you to do. And that way, the town planning board could complete the document that had all the required statements. Give it to you, there would be no way to challenge that. I think that would have been the appropriate thing to do. Thank you.
Don Mendelken.
Don Mendelken, thirty-four oh six Winster Drive. Heavenly Father, I just pray for everybody here. Everyone's got an issue, a problem, dislikes, the Lord, you can straighten it out. You just need to wake all of us up, those four, those eight. Moving on, the thousand acres. I hear it quite often, the thousand acres was gone before this new council got in place. The mayor was there, he was trying to work it out, and the old council was trying to work it out. The, all the meetings before all this, and David said, I'm done. And he went to the field work. It was done. You can keep blaming the council of four as I keep hearing, you know, seeing, but that's not the case. This has been going on for years. But it's okay, you don't blame someone. You can look in the mirror from here, that's what I would say. Second thing, elections, they do have consequences. Staff changes, affirmative. Cannot go immediately, whether you like Trump or not, as soon as he went off, what are they doing? Him and Elon. They're fixing things, they're getting rid of people that don't go along the way. Now, that doesn't mean that anybody has to do that. I'm just saying, when you have new people in charge, it happens. So the simple, my simple answer is, you gotta get over it. You may not like how it goes, but that's just the way it goes. Politics is politics. This town does not belong to one group or the other. It's some group. We can do all the personal attacks we want here, it don't do a bit of good. Now, you want to wait till the final audit review that everybody's mad about. Was it handled right? Town attorney said it was okay, so legal said okay, so who you want to blame for that? You can blame anybody you want, but legal council was conferred, and they agreed, they said, let's do it, then that's the way it goes. So I would say, whatever that final audit review, if nothing comes back, so be it. Then it's clean, then we move on. And there's the threats of defamation, whatever it might be. It takes a lot to prove stuff like that, you know, comments of many politicians say a lot of things. Everybody up here said a whole bunch of things are very demeaning, very, very demeaning. But you know what? We all got to grow up and move on, so this is Somerville. So, good luck.
Good luck. Public comments, we'll have a timeout for council, manager, attorney as needed or necessary to respond to the comments.
I heard a couple of times people talk about transparency, and I would recommend anyone that has questions about things that are going on, reach out to a council member and meet up at town hall and have a conversation about it.
Ms. Dow.
It's one thing to say whatever you want on Facebook, but it's another thing to meet in person and have a conversation about it and ask your questions and give us the opportunity to answer your questions. If you don't reach out to us and ask us, and you just make assumptions about how we feel or what we think, I just don't think you're giving us the opportunity to be transparent. It's nice to finally meet, see some people for the first time face to face. I don't believe we've ever even had a conversation or met or anything, but we have.
Well, I'm not on Facebook, yours you got me in a couple of times.
Okay, well, I would love to sit down with those of you that have concerns, and I'm sure that anyone on council would. Meet with you at town hall in a public place so there's nothing threatening or greasy about it. And for no reason, just to sit down and.
Strang, Messi, you were not transparent about what you wanted to discuss.
I'm open to discussing whatever you want to discuss, whatever questions you have and whatever you want to talk about. Let's meet up at town hall, it's a public place, there's other employees there. We can sit down at the conference table, manager's office, wherever you want to meet, at town hall and have a conversation about it. So if you want transparency, I would challenge you to reach out to any of us and set up an appointment, and let's talk about it. And a lot of these questions that were asked are great questions, and we can answer them for you. I'm not hiding it, just you've never came and asked me the question. So you're welcome to do that.
Did Lynn get her information about the Eagles?
Ms. Rider, I can't, it's not time, yeah, I'm sorry, it's not time for the audience now. It's, it's time for the council to have opportunity to respond. Ms. Bane.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
There were a lot of things that could be addressed, but the one other thing that stands out to me is that the mayor and Mr. Doggett did know in advance about the third-party auditor coming in to do it. So whoever's saying that they didn't know that we left some council out, they, they did get a phone call about it, and they knew about it in advance. Would you like, do you disagree?
I can speak to that, yeah.
You may not have known the depths of it, but you knew that someone was coming in.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
That's exactly right.
So they, to say they didn't know about it isn't true. I didn't know the depths of it either. None of us knew the depths of it. We just knew that a third-party person was coming in to look over everything. And they knew just like we did. You can, okay, Don, did you know?
Just, I knew this, somebody was investigating, I didn't know anything about the, I asked about the report, it's told that I found out same time as they did.
Same.
Did Heath, did you see the report ahead of time? Did you see the report ahead of time?
First time I saw it, Councilman Robinson was when we were all back, in fact, he got it before me, and then I got it.
I got it before me.
So we all found out about the report at the same time, and we all knew that a third-party was going to come in and look over some things that were found. Or, I don't know, I don't even think it was that. We just knew someone was coming in to look over something. But I didn't know what was going to be looked over, just the same as him and John did. So we were all equally, none of us knew about any of that before the others.
Are you addressing it?
No, no, okay, I'm sorry, if I have my, I can't.
Yeah, sorry.
No, I'm just, in general, it's been said many times that they didn't know and they didn't know.
Okay.
I did not know what she was reviewing, what she was doing. On the day of the council meeting, I talked to Mr. Rollins three different times and went in his office and was told it was just the labor had something to do with overtime, and we get the report that night.
They're meeting, whatever meeting, because I didn't, I didn't know when the report should have been.
Tell me what I was told, I figured a little, a little of what happened that Tuesday night had to do with overtime.
Ms. Perry, now that we can't have a conversation at this time, if you can get me your materials about your, I'm sorry, I forgot. Yes, then I will try to look into that for you. Just be patient with me, that I will find the time to do it.
And actually, just so you know, I hadn't forgotten about that either, that we have a new attorney coming in, so that was on my to-do list to give to her, whether she can do that stuff, because she is going to have to look into that. It's going to have to be town attorney involvement there. I didn't mean to cut you off, but yeah.
No, I just wanted to let Ms. Perry know that I will try to be the front runner on that for her.
Also, there's a lot of familiar faces here tonight, and I've noticed there's a lot of hostility towards the current administration. There's been a real focus on exiting, exiting members, but not really acknowledgement of the incoming folks. And we've had some great people come in, and we're excited about that. Charles, Charles Rollins here, Ashley Anderson, Clarence Johnson's on one of the committees, Rocky Gaines. You know, and then a lot of folks stepped up. We had Don Mendelken really did a lot of things for us when we needed folks. Danny Nelson, is he still here? Oh, there he is. Man, again, you know, he is, he's just been a blessing. Priscilla Alderman, we had a lot of folks come in and help us. And then really, I've noticed that the local media has focused more on, on the folks that has exited than those folks that stepped in. Every administration has changed, and I'm just happy for all of the new faces and the people that we've got. Really excited for it.
Any other comments? Counsel, manager, Ms. Anderson?
Come on, Ms. Anderson, don't you want to? Oh, come on, Ms. Anderson, don't you want to...
I would just like to say that, you know, where we are as a town is a very difficult place, and it's very discouraging to see things in the state that they are in. And the elections do have consequences, and I'm aware of that. And so I run this meeting every month, I sign the checks when they call me. But other than that, I don't participate, because if I share an opinion, they're most likely to do the opposite of that opinion. You know, I have asked before, and I will ask again respectfully to the majority of the council, you know, where is the positive? Where is this going for the town and the residents and citizens in Somerville? You all have the vault, and you've had an opportunity to hire all these new people, primarily because of the way Mr. Whitaker was treated and some of the staff were treated. It provided you this wonderful opportunity to employ new people and do good things and positive things for the town of Somerville. And I would ask you again tonight respectfully to let that staff go, you know. And talking about transparency from a council member to one person of the community is not a reflection of a joint transparency. We have a responsibility to all the citizens of Somerville to be transparent. Prior to this administration, when I wrote something on behalf of the town, I shared it with everyone before sending it out.
That's one difference. No, no.
I did.
No, you didn't. You put out letters last time.
I put out...
You didn't let me see them.
I put out one letter. In reference to misinformation that was being given out in the community.
Okay, so what did you say, what was it?
With the exception of that letter, every single letter I ever wrote, I asked for not only approval, but I asked for input from the council, and took subsequently took input from the council before sending those letters on behalf of the town. From a perspective of transparency, you know, you all said during the campaign, you know, this about transparency. I've been transparent about everything. The only thing I have, things that I have not shared were the letters that the legal team said, "You should not release that at this time." And even when y'all made a pit about that, I said, "Release them." I didn't, I didn't not release them because I wanted to hide them. We were advised by council not to release them. So, you know, I would encourage you all to share openly, share transparently, and I would also encourage you to, you know, as Mr. Nelson said, that staff is gone. Good, bad, or indifferent, that staff is gone. Stop pursuing those people for whatever reason, and let them go. And look forward and move forward with your agenda, with a positive agenda for our town. And I would encourage you, and ask respectfully that you do that. All that we are doing here is promoting more legal situations and lawsuits. We all got a letter today telling us to preserve evidence in preparation for a defamation case. We all got that email. You know, we should stop looking back. We should stop looking in this never-ending witch hunt. I do not think fraud will be found, I do not think embezzlement will be found, I do not think espionage will be found. Are people perfect? I don't think anybody here is perfect. People do make mistakes, but was there any criminal intent, any nefarious actions by those people? I don't think so. And I've stated that from the beginning. I would encourage you all to stop this IT forensic pursuit, because it is getting ready to go to another level of expense. And we just continue to pour good money after bad. We are delaying the future of Somerville, and the people of Somerville deserve so much more than what is currently being delivered.
Mr. Mayor, were you referring to the council in every bit of that, giving us advice and instructions?
Of course.
I'll make sure. You were referring to this?
I'm talking about the whole situation.
Yeah, because you said, "Let the staff go," but I don't know what you're talking about. Could you be a little more clear? What are we letting them go from? Please, the board.
The pursuit.
Come on.
Pursuit of law.
You know, I'm not trying to get in the weeds of this, but if you want to, I would.
Okay, excuse me, Ms. Rader.
I'm trying to be professional. I'm trying to say, "Just please stop, y'all got the ball. Take it and go forward, and do good things for the town."
Stop, I'm being a serious candidate. Stop. I know, I mean, I feel like...
When I start, when I start, the can is open. And I'm trying not to call y'all out. I'm trying to offer you nice, respectful advice. That's all this is.
Please, the board, just get on.
Of course, it looks as though to me...
Give it, folks. Just the council.
It looks as though to me that I think these are talking points that you're trying to get maybe some of your friends to pair it with wrong, because it's definitely not true. No one's trying to get anybody. But what we are trying to do is to make sure that we have made integrity, things that the courts have told the former administration are necessary for us to do.
Then, Mr. Hamilton, would you please tell us why we let Scott Whitaker go? Just answer that one question, Mr. Mayor.
No, you do not have to do that.
Mr. Mayor and council, please indulge me for a minute. I caution you, and your discussions right now could be used in any legal proceedings.
And I'm worried, Mr. Mayor...
I said the same thing in January.
Trying to do that.
No, I was not. He's very obvious.
Why would you ask a question that you know you can't answer? When you're asking a question, you know that...
I have a floor now.
Mr. Vennett.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to hear some positives about the town. So I'm gonna, I've jotted down a list, it's all over the place. We had volunteers to step up and help out wherever needed. One in particular volunteer is Jeff Bacon. He came in, he helped out, he's still there. He is amazing, he will do whatever we need. He's been helping with the PRRs, because we know that they were behind, and he got them up a little bit behind now, I think. I'm not sure where that is. But anyway, he leads an example of being a volunteer and being to your community because you love it. I, well, Ms. Rader, I had a question about eagles, because someone else had asked me. I see her as an environmentalist, I reached out to her, she gave me the information, and I passed it to that person, so thank you very much. Jen Kelly is our new finance officer, she has a new program. Excuse me, I don't know, this is not my little house, but we're one hand is talking to the other, and it consolidates everything, and it makes everything easier for her to run her programs, and get better reports for us and you guys to see. Greg Fox, he jumped on board on the, as a newest planning board member. Maria Adams has jumped on board for Founder's Day. We, our past town attorney, we, his leaving, he went to DC to be...